We will get started. Today is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. This is Town Council Meeting 07-25. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the Town Council Chamber at 30 Main Street in Freeport. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will take roll call, see who is here. Councillor Egan.
Here.
Councillor Pillsbury.
Present.
Councillor Pilch.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
I'm here.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Benoit is here and present. Councillor Lawrence is excused for the night. All right, our third order of business is to waive the reading and accept as printed the March 18th, 2025 meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No typos?
Aye.
Not this time? Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Next up is announcements. I don't know if I have any today. Chris kept some for. Okay, all right.
I can start with announcements.
Do you have an announcement? Go for it.
I have a couple of announcements. First of all, it is April 1st, but I have my mind set on the 4th of July. So I want to share that one of the big events that has happened in Freeport for quite a long time is the LL Bean 10K on the 4th of July. They are once again looking for volunteers to help make that work. That's a tremendous event that brings hundreds of folks not only to downtown Freeport, but to South Freeport, Porter's Landing, and all over town. It's a great 4th of July tradition, and if you are interested in helping make that happen as a volunteer, you can go to the LL Bean website. Just search for 4th of July Road Race and it'll take you to the place to sign up to volunteer. The other announcement I wanted to make in this dovetails with, I think, something that the Chair has been announcing the last couple of weeks. There seems to be an ever-increasing problem with folks not cleaning up after their dogs in Freeport. We are hearing about it from all corners of town, from Freeport Conservation Trust to folks around Pettingill Farm, to folks using Winslow Park. It is not just that the snow has revealed, or the melting snow has revealed, everything that has not been picked up. It was pretty evident even when the snow was fresh that people were not picking up after their dogs. And I think as anyone who is a dog owner or uses a trail that is also used by dog owners, I think it would be helpful if we as a community were able to remind folks that it's important not only for public health and safety, but also just to make the trails that we all want to use and share and enjoy enjoyable. And my fear is that if this problem continues, that there will be more properties that simply aren't available to dog walkers. So I just want to share that.
Any other announcements? Councillor Egan.
Two things. One, Saturday, April 12th, there's a fundraiser for Freeport Community Services called the Can Jam. And so you can feel good about contributing some shelf-stable, non-perishable items at that event and also hear some great local music all afternoon. It's held at Meeting House Arts. And the second thing is I just want to remind anybody who's listening and folks in the room that next Tuesday, a week from this evening on April 8th, there will be a workshop specifically around housing and housing solutions, housing issues, and the parameters of what the council may or may not be able to do to promote more opportunities and more diversity in housing in our community. So it's wide open for the public. I encourage you to come if you have ideas or suggestions for increasing housing opportunities in Freeport.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Councillor Brown?
Yes, I have one announcement. Astronomers tell us that spring started on March 21st, but I have some different evidence that I want to share with you. The sound in my backyard on the 26th of March, the true start of spring, the thing that informs farmers what to do. My little buddies, I think, know better than the astronomers. Astronomers are smart, we know that. Anyway, there you go.
Thank you. I know the increasing light has been very welcomed for many of us.
Was that laden or unladen, Steve?
All right, any other announcements? Okay. So we will move on to information exchange. This is an opportunity for councillors to share conversations with constituents and also any happenings with committees. I have a few items to share. Last week, I had the pleasure of getting coffee with Mark Stoddard, who is the Chairman of the Board for the Maine Trust for Local News. I think as many folks know, the forecaster had its last print edition last week. It is moving entirely to digital, which I think will definitely present some unique challenges to accessing information. And he reached out specifically to figure out how to cover Freeport more effectively with the change of how news is being delivered. So I know he's meeting with Chalmers, our resident journalist, and also Winter, our Director of the Library, to think through how we can make sure folks are able to access news online, can get sort of help doing so, yeah, and just get the information they need. So I was very excited to hear that. I was grateful he reached out and thank you, Winter, for being so receptive to that conversation. We also gave a few more fit-up grant awards. We met earlier, nope, it was last week. So we gave three awards, one to 35B Main Street at the property owner's request. We approved $10,000 of funding pending confirmation from the tenant. That passive house Maine will be moving in, they have since confirmed. We also gave a supplementary award to Grande Burrito for some of the in-kind and materials work that he has put into the space. And after a very informative and delicious tour, we gave $10,000 to Wilbur's to basically improve their efficiency, improve job quality for the existing employees, reduce physical labor demands in repetitive motion, and to be able to offer improved compensation and benefits, and to enhance visitor experience and attract more people to Freeport. And then finally, my last piece of information is that the manager and Councillor Pillsbury and I will be following up with Sarah Randle and probably a few of her trustees as well next week after the workshop. So a little bit longer than we anticipated, but it's on the calendar. Okay, any other pieces of information? Councillor Brown?
The Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board met last Wednesday, and I'd like to provide a little bit of a summary about what they discussed. They will be sending some feedback to the Planning Board regarding the Comprehensive Plan. They also discussed the implementation of Goal 6.1.1 from the Climate Action Plan, which you might remember, that goal consisting of launching an ongoing public education and outreach campaign on sustainable landscaping, green infrastructure, lower light pollution, resilient land management practices. And they will be looking to organizations for some potential funding. They're also looking for ideas beyond signs and lectures. There was some discussion about storm drain management, including storm drain gardens. So last week, a citizen, last week we met after hearing from a citizen, Barton Seaver, a well-known chef, writer, promoter of all things seafood, and who suggested that the town of Freeport become involved with the Maine Coast Fishermen's Association Working Waterfront Program. And Councillor Benoit and myself met with Barton and their Special Projects Manager, Emerson Goodrich. At that meeting, we learned about their Working Waterfront Program currently involving seven communities up and down the coast. That includes the likes of Kidderi, Phippsburg, Harpswell, Stonington, Goolsborough, and others. The program is supported by a grant and the association staff. Our involvement would start by designating a person to take inventory using their Working Waterfront template. Such a template would allow us to standardize our data collection. Standardized data is important because it allows comparisons and learnings from the other town participants. The value would come from the actual process of taking inventory and working with other cohorts in the project, and the learnings would in turn inform our future decisions. To me, it seems clear that this is a worthwhile endeavor for our town. I noticed, I went into that meeting thinking Working Waterfront, hmm, the town wharf, the marine is Falls Point Marine. By the end of the meeting, though, it became clear it's just so much more. The Working Waterfront includes all of the aquaculture out in the bay, the clambers, Harasek at Lobster and Lunch, Freeport Oyster Bar, say that 10 times, access points such as LL Bean's Flying Point Paddling Center, fabrication shops that build lobster traps, businesses that support and outfit boats, and generally cater to the fishermen. Such an inventory will help us understand and preserve this valuable asset.
Thank you, and I've since connected Sophie and the Harbor Master to Emerson, so that conversation should continue. So, thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
The Police Advisory Committee met last night, and I'll share two things, two items to note. One is they are working on improving the form that we use for commendations and complaints. So if somebody has a complaint or wants to offer a commendation, there is a form, we're making it a better form, but more importantly, we're also going to delineate what happens after you file a complaint, what the processes, when you can expect to hear back, things like that. This is not in response to anything that's happened, there are no concerns. It's more to have something in place so that in the future, if there is an issue, it's clear how it's supposed to be dealt with. So that's just a general improvement. And the others, the body cams that we had previously funded are now in place, all the officers have them, they're in use, they've already been used on at least a couple of occasions to thwart a complaint. So there was a potential complaint about, you know, I wasn't treated right by the police during a stop, and then it's pretty clear when you look at the video that it was pretty, it was done correctly, and there were no issues. Anyway, everybody seems happy with those, as far as I can tell. We'll probably hear more from the Police Advisory Committee over the next month or two. That's what I got.
Councillor Pillsbury?
Just one item from the last Finance Committee meeting, thanks to the prompting of our town manager. We talked for a while about last year's deliberation over the pool of money for the social service agencies and various nonprofits that solicit for town resources. And if we, those of you that were here recall, we spent a long time debating the last, like, $45,000 of our budget in order to allow a more expedient review of our operating budget and still do service to those organizations. We're proposing that we allocate a fixed amount as part of the budget that will be, that can be awarded to organizations like that, that submit requests, and that we designate something like the Special Projects Committee to go through the funding applications and make those awards. That way, we don't have to spend as much time trying to figure out what's going in and out of the operating budget, and we have a more streamlined process. It's more transparent, understandable, and we can set parameters and give that guidance to the community for folks that want to apply. So.
Great idea.
I don't think it was mine.
Any other announcements or questions? Councillor Egan?
Real quick, I just, it's not really a committee item, but I just wanted, well, good timing for the Chief to walk in. I just wanted to share my appreciation for Freeport Public Safety and Fire and Rescue and what they do virtually invisibly for so many people in our community. Hearing some feedback from folks about great experiences with members of both of those departments, and particularly reading about the events of the past couple of weeks as captured in the manager's report to the council about activities going on, unfortunate activities. So anyway, just expressing my appreciation for public safety who are hardly ever in a visible spotlight. And I know we have some discussions coming up, and this isn't meant to be a timing or related to that at all, it's just my appreciation for the work they do.
This is more along the lines of constituent conversations, but back to the 4th of July. In addition to the road race, which I already mentioned, there is, of course, our parade, which is a fantastic community engagement opportunity and certainly does bring a lot of folks regionally and further into Freeport. One of the things that we've heard already is not happening this summer are our usual LL Bean concerts, which would include a significant piece of what is often the evening side of community events downtown on the 4th of July. And that also means that there are also complications with fireworks for that evening. So we know that the location from which we have been setting off fireworks will not be available to the town this year. We know that there is an amount of funding that will not be available. And I bring this up because I know Toni Whitney, when she was here at our last meeting giving us an update on FEDC, mentioned fireworks and mentioned that we are often leaning on the business community to help us pull that off. And I'm wondering if that is really the best investment of those dollars, particularly from the town, since we haven't really budgeted for that. And I would just encourage all of us as councillors to sort of be having that conversation with our own constituents about whether or not that is something that is particularly important to the people of Freeport in terms of how we're spending that money, particularly where I think there are increasing concerns that that is not an enjoyable event for people who do not like loud noises, who have animals that do not like loud noises, or who have environmental concerns about what that is. It's also a particularly weather-dependent event that is difficult to get your money back from if you can't actually do it. So I just, that's not anything we're going to talk about and make decisions about tonight, but I want to raise it well in advance because I think that question is coming to us soon.
Anything else from the council? All right, we will move on to the manager's report.
I wanted to start tonight by just drawing your attention to the fact that we have rolled out a brand-new municipal bulletin today. It was April 1st, but we hope to do it on May 1st and June 1st and July 1st as well. I would love if councillors or members of the community have feedback regarding that, to hear that. It is going out under Constant Contact, so we can have a more reader-friendly experience with it, but if you have feedback, we'd love to hear it. I'm just going to say Pete is a lot more creative than I would be, so it was very good. Just to give you an update, because the Planning Partnership Initiative with MDOT is one of our big projects that we're carrying through from staff, council, and the Complete Streets Committee, we, we, by we, I mean the royal we, it was Brett, put out an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications, for a combination engineering planning team to be the consultant for that grant. Well, this is a project that we have to be in alignment with DOT, so DOT has to agree with the process, and they have a say in who is ultimately hired, but we are making, it's a locally-led process. So the eight firms that have responded, the materials have been sent out to the Subcommittee or a committee that includes representation from staff, council, and the Complete Streets Committee. They're going to go through the submissions and hopefully come back next meeting, the 15th, with a recommendation to council because ultimately this group or team has to be one that the council wants to work with. As you may already know, staff's working really hard to bring forth a budget. We are on target right now. Jessica's working really hard to be able to have budget documents to council on or about the 17th of April, understanding that we don't actually have the presentation until May 1st, so we might take a couple of more days in that to get the material to you, but she's working hard to try to meet that April 17 deadline. And just so you plan accordingly, it is a lot more material that will give you a better sense of the environment within which those numbers are being, you know, the budgets are being asked for. Earl reports that the tool lending library should be up and operational by mid-May. The tools have been ordered. We ended up making some changes. I think Earl's been in touch through Caroline with folks about some of the changes in tools, a little bit more than what we had thought, but I think we opted not to have a snow blower, yeah. So as soon as all the tools are in, we've worked with Winter and her team at the library. We're actually going to have the sign-out through Minerva, which is the library, so it will be something that people can go online, sign out things, and Earl will take care of putting them out for people to pick up, showing them how to use them, looking at them when they come back to make sure that they're safe to lend again. I want to remind folks that we're going to start the Town Manager's Office drop-in hours, which will be the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. We start that next week, so Caroline and I will be there with bells on to talk to people. We're a little disappointed to report that the Community Resilience Grant that we had to have in by December is still delayed in giving an answer. We received an email letting us know that they continue to work through the process, but there were so many applications that they are well behind, and we should see it at some point in time. I do want to follow up in my manager's report, actually, I don't think it was the manager's report, I think I copied council on emails that I sent to most of the federal delegation. Couldn't get through to Representative Golden because our zip doesn't match with his district, but did have an opportunity to talk with representatives from Representative Pingree's office and email back and forth with somebody from Senator King's office. So they are aware that we're very concerned with the Trump administration's economic advisers' suggestion, recommendation that they repeal the tax-exempt status for municipal bonds. So I feel like the numbers that we provided them about the increase to the taxpayer for simple things like buying trucks, or taking care of roads, or putting up public safety buildings, I think that they connected with that. They said, we'll hear more, we'll see. And just checking in to make sure you're okay with me making those kinds of steps on the operational side of things, or if you would prefer to have that come back to council first. Planning staff and the Planning Board continue to work on the revision to the Design Review Ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan. We expect a brief review of the comp plan to come back to council on the 15th of April because in order to get it to the state to begin its review for consistency with state law, your fearless council chair has to sign off, along with Planning Board Chair, to send it to the state. And we really felt like council should at least have a sense of what it says before it goes to the state for state review. So I would expect that as probably a committee report.
And the draft has been sent to everybody, so.
Booked the whole evening. I spent two and a half hours and did not get through all of the fantasies.
Going to say, it's going to take longer than that, yeah.
It is quite substantial.
Also, wanted to just let council know that we have, we had an internal staff meeting with all employees that support various council committees, and we're beginning the process of making sure that we're using standardized processes for promoting where we hold meetings, how to promote them, what an agenda should look like, the legal requirements for documentation post-meeting. So you should see a little bit more standardization there. Remember, everything is a work in progress, and we're all just trying our best to come to the step at a time. And the last thing, I just want to leave you with the fact that we have a bill in the Maine State Legislature, LD 1144, that proposes to bring back the Property Tax Stabilization Program with, and the only change in it is capping the amount that would be stabilized at $900,000. So you're still not means-tested with a system that people have to apply to every year, and it says that the state will reimburse us for our administrative costs. So we know the last time we did this, the state was $15 million short in its budget to actually fund the program. So I am a huge supporter of property tax, anything we can do to alleviate property taxes, but I am really concerned about this particular, bringing back a program that we already know failed. And sitting with seniors as they took, as they went through the application process for the local rebate program, I really got to hear the impact of having something stabilized for one year and then having a big jump the next year. So I'm just a little bit concerned about that on its face. If you read it, the title, it might, it sounds good, but I'm really nervous what that will do for our residents.
Any questions for our manager?
Are we getting any feedback from MMA on their sort of prognostication or crystal ball about the traction that that might get? I mean, it's a very, very tight budget year for the state.
It's a very tight budget year. It has, it should have a large fiscal note, which should slow it down. We know that MMA and actually some senior advocates are coming out against it just because of the problems that ensued last time.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Sophie. All right, we will move on to Public Comments Period, Part 1. This is limited to comments that are not on the agenda. This is for in-person attendees only, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Is anyone wishing to speak during public comment? All right. Moving on to the next part of our agenda, Item 35-25. This is to consider action relative to adopting the April 1st, 2025 Consent Agenda. Councillor Egan, could you read the be ordered? Good timing, sorry.
Be it ordered that the April 1, 2025 Consent Agenda be adopted.
Second.
All right, the Consent Agenda today includes a roster of appointments. Chris kept the Appointments Committee very busy the last couple of weeks, making sure we did our due diligence and interviewed folks. I thought it was really good practice. And then there's a donation for playground equipment and donations to the community library. Anything we want to pull off for discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Item 36-25. This is a public hearing about the proposed amendments to This is a public hearing about the proposed amendments to Freeport's voting districts, the map we see over here to the other side of the dais. This is a public hearing. Should I let you speak first?
So I just, I wanted to give this process just a little bit of context. Once every five years, Chris is required by our charter to look at the different voting districts in the community and to apportion them appropriately to make sure that we have relatively similar size number of voters for each of the districts. It is important to note that our voter, voting, our list of registered voters changes on a daily basis, and there are some people in there because it takes three years to have them, to have somebody removed if they are not active. It takes time.
It takes time.
There we go. It takes time. So as we looked at this, we really were paying attention to how we can best describe where your voting district is so that it is like easy to say you're on a certain side of a road or on a road as opposed to breaking things up in many different ways. Chris and our assessor, Min, actually used GIS for the first time, and she did a lot of work, so here she is.
She pretty much summed it all up, and using the GIS was a lot more efficient and accurate than me sitting for days with coloring in the maps, trying to figure out where I was going to move everyone. So how the process started was we created a map of our current districts, and then I run the numbers and see what we've got. So when I did the numbers, you can see District 1 was at 1925, District 2 was at 1941, so those were our heavy districts. District 4 had 1823, and District 3 had 1807. So we had to move from 1 and 2 over into 3 and 4. We did an initial map where we had brought some of District 3 up into here, and Counselor Pilch felt as though people that lived in this area really had District 1 concerns, so we went back to the drawing table. We put those people back into District 1, and what you're seeing here tonight that's different from when we set the public hearing is we put District 1 back and we made two changes. We made a little change over here of District 1 that's going into 4, and then we made these changes over here. This whole area here will now be District 3. So when we're moving voters, we are not looking at anyone's party affiliation. This has nothing to do with how many Republicans or Democrats are in any district. This is simply to make sure that each district counselors are representing the same number of voters. And I will just say, we also do have three counselors at large, so for anyone that feels as though maybe their district, their district counselor is not hearing them, we do have the three at-large counselors, two to reach out to. Does anyone have questions?
All right, we will open the public hearing if anyone would like to speak on this.
Barb Skelton, 65 Hunter Road. I want to thank Chris for explaining to me the process. Some of you have seen me. I am one of her workers at the polls, so I should know more about this than I do. I had initial concerns about how the numbers were equalized, and I was afraid that it was by party, and she has assured me that has nothing to do with it. I do appreciate that you're trying to make the changes based on the roads. I think that's a natural divide. I'm currently now in District 1, and I don't feel I have anything.
In here somewhere?
Right, right in that area, yes. I don't feel that we have much in common with District 1, and I had always been in District 4 for years. We were in District 4. So it seems a little foreign to me to, you know, reach out to District 1 counselor or to attend a District 1 meeting when, as I like to say, we're on the right side of the tracks, we're on the panel side, so it's more rural, more quiet. I identify much more with the District 4 area. But, you know, I just want to say I appreciate that the system, that the process is done, that it, you know, it's done every five years or so, and I think I've had my questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordained?
One quick question.
Yeah.
What, I see the numbers on the sticky notes here, Chris. What are the tabulations? I guess I could do the math, but what did they end up being?
Like 1878.
Yeah, I mean, we literally moved those numbers. I think we were, one district was, had one number more, but in the meantime, this week, I have canceled 25 voters. So it's irrelevant in a sense. See what I'm, you know?
It's all around like 1878.
But we did, we did those numbers of changes.
Yeah, okay.
The 51 and 67.
Right, okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure, this may have been mentioned tonight. I know it was mentioned when we set the public hearing. No counselors got moved, even the at-large, but still. All right, any other thoughts?
Well, Amy, we weren't even part of the process, so.
Exactly, yeah.
I didn't even know this was happening.
Yeah.
Be it ordained that the adoption of amended voting districts to make the number of registered voters in each district equal be approved.
Second.
All right, any discussion, further discussion? Thank you, Chris. I really enjoyed being a witness to this process, so thank you. All right, all in favor? Oh, you had more to say, never mind.
I was just going to say also, so my thanks both to Chris and to Min for making this so, so smooth. And just in response to Barb's comment, I would say that it could be that your voting district is just like Maine weather. If you don't like it, just wait four years, and it'll change.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, moving on to item 37-25. This is another public hearing relative to proposed amendments to Chapter 29, the ordinance to levy service charges on certain tax-exempt property. Sophie, do you want to provide some background?
Sure. So we initially looked into this ordinance because it came to our attention that we were referencing the statute to give the town authority to implement a way to levy fees on certain tax-exempt properties, and that statutory provision had been repealed. And so we went on a search. We found that it was later put back in in another place. So what you see there is a correction to the current statutory authority, and then we made, I think, some minor changes that take this out of assessing a fee through the tax assessor who is really not comfortable with assessing fees. He assigns value and assesses it. It's a different setup. So we changed that to the town manager and left the town council as the appeal body, or put the town council in as the appeal body as opposed to the board of, local board of assessment review. And then the other thing that we did is we put it into the new kind of standardized format that we're using for all of the ordinances as we revise them.
Great. So this is a public hearing, so I will, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any thoughts or discussion up here, Counselor Pilch?
Just to clarify, Sophie, are there any fees that we're currently charging, or are there any fees that we intend to be charging in the near future?
No. In fact, the ordinance committee had a discussion about whether or not we should just repeal this ordinance, and what they decided is in the long run, there might be a time when that would make sense, but for right now, there, we're not aware of a situation that would work for that.
Any other questions? Okay, Counselor Pilch, could you read the be it ordained?
Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 29, ordinance to levy service charges on certain tax-exempt property to align with state law and internal organizational practices be approved.
Second.
Okay, any final thoughts? All those in favor? Okay. Another public hearing, this is item 38-25. This is to provide the opportunity for public comment on our capital investment program. This is sort of our long-term plan for investments into the town. And Jessica?
She's coming.
Here she is. I'll let you introduce.
Yes, so the item before you is just to have the public hearing about our capital plan and get public feedback potentially on what they like or would like to see different within. So I'll step back and let it.
Okay. All right. So I will open the public hearing if anyone would like to comment on the capital improvement plan.
I just have a question. I haven't read the capital improvements, but years past, we've had pretty bad returns on our accounts. I paid the bills down to the cemetery in Flying Point, and I was wondering if we've been able to get more than 1.5% on our investments, so, you know, I know we're the poorest cemetery in town down there, but it'd be nice if I got a little more money to help pay for the mowing, so maybe somebody could tell me if we're doing better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will close the public hearing.
Can we just let Jessica?
I wanted to close the public hearing first and let Jessica comment on that.
Yeah, so we have been earning better returns over the last couple of years. One of the issues with our trusts in particular, the cemetery trust, is that there was some misunderstanding a while back about what funds should be dispersed for cemetery care and maintenance, and the, we were starting to dip into some of the principal nature, principal side of the trust versus just the interest earned on the trust. So what's being referenced primarily is that in order to rectify the situation, we reduced the last couple of years what would be typically dispersed to the cemeteries to replenish the trust to, back to make it whole, as well as to follow the guidelines of the trust. And so it, the last couple of years have been a little rough with what has been actually dispersed to the cemeteries to make up for that oversight, but we should be back on track. I believe all the cemeteries now are back in a positive state. There may be a few minor adjustments, but we should be on track to have full disbursements going forward.
Question is about making more?
We are making market rates of money for the investments that we're in.
Which is?
I don't have them exactly off the top of my head, but it's been around 4%. You're welcome.
All right, the public hearing is closed, so I'll bring it up here.
Can I ask a question? Well, maybe we should, I don't want to derail us. I do have some questions as to the operations and management of the trust for the cemeteries and how the maintenance is done, and why we've, why it's currently set up the way it is. Maybe we could talk about that at a future meeting because this isn't really applicable to the capital improvement plan, but it's.
To make sure that that goes in the right place, is that something that you would like to see in the finance committee, or is that a workshop?
Someplace.
Or you can come in and see me at any time, and we can have a discussion on it, too.
Yeah, well, I think it would be beneficial for it to be more in the open, so maybe we can start with the finance committee.
Okay.
I'd love to take that on.
Says the chair of the finance committee.
I will put that on for May.
How did that happen?
I also, I think we did a great job this year going through each of the articles during our workshops. I don't think we discussed the TIFs, so I just want to make sure we draw attention to the TIF articles as well, when we were reviewing and kind of thinking through our last questions for Jessica, so. Either tonight, or I think we'll adopt it, consider adopting it next meeting, so not to put you on the spot, but I know we didn't get to that.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna own, Jessica and I had a miscommunication, well, I had a miscommunication with Jessica. I am used to a world where economic development is an operating expense and would be discussed with the operating budget. So I just met on Thursday with FEDC to talk about what they were going to do. I think my plan would be to be able to have that information to you around economic development probably later on in April. I've given, I think Mary's going to have something to me by the end of next week or early the following week, so I would just, that's my mistake. Next year, we'll put it back in with capital.
So it could be as right now, there's no budget attached, yep.
That's my mistake.
And also, we didn't discuss cable. We didn't go through cable. There's not much there, but also want to draw attention to that article. Not much different there, I should say. Great. Any other thoughts or questions for Jessica? Okay, this was mostly just for information. There's no motion, so we will move on. Thank you, Jessica. All right, we will move on to item 39-25. This is to set a public hearing regarding amendments to the Town of Freeport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administrative Code. I think we were planning on having Nick here for background.
So Nick is online and ready to give you background. I just want to set this up for, we have, once you've talked with Nick, there are several options that you have. This is the vehicle to get it in front of you because if you want to make amendments to the ordinance, we would have to call the public hearing tonight. So with that, I am going to pass it along to my very capable code officer.
Good evening, hearing.
Yes, we can.
All right, so the first one, item 3925, this one's, we won't need to get into the details of that. I'll be interested in some of the details of it. All I'm proposing on this is to remove the section and the code section out of my, out of, basically out of the administrative code, the actual code, code that we're adopting, remove them out and just reference back to Chapter 11. So that one basically is when somebody's applying for a permit or architecture or anything like that, they're going to go to the building code, or just not going to go to the admin code. So all I'm proposing here is no discussion of like, of like policy changes, just move that, all that, all those codes, let's just put them in Chapter 11 per se. And then Chapter 11 will be the discussion item, I think, for tonight and the next meeting, if that makes sense. if that makes sense.
We will move forward with this item then before we discuss the next one.
Do you want to have the full discussion under this one and then make the decision whether you want to?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, the next item is related, as Nick has just explained. Nick, would you be able to provide the background on that one as well?
Sure. So Chapter 11 is our building code ordinance. So the main uniform building and energy code, which was adopted in 2010 by the legislature, sets up a, basically, a main technical board that reviews all the codes and they have to adopt them. We can't be more than two code cycles behind. So the last time we adopted the code, the state adopted the code was 2018, I believe, or a little bit behind that. But the way that the state law is written, the only, it's basically uniform code throughout the state, the only item that the state allows us, the main state legislature allows us to change will be to adopt a more strict energy code. Last year, the county.
Nick, we just lost you. Oh, you're back.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yep.
Okay. So last year, the town adopted the stretch energy code, which we started July 1, 2024. If we go with the stretch energy code again, moving forward, April 7, which would be next Monday, we will be adopting the new language, as I included in my memo, which is basically the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code, which basically takes the unamended code and then adds in for commercial aspects, you gotta be 15% better, and for residential, you're 15% better unless you go all electric, which can go down to 10%. And the policy decision will be for the council, if they want to continue with the stretch energy code, or if they want to just stay on the statewide energy code, which would just be the 2021 energy code amended by the state, and there's just a couple small amendments that the state has made.
Thank you, Nick. Curious to hear thoughts from the council.
Nick, you'd, you'd sent an email with some data. Am I getting that right? He pulled, you'd pulled some data around the last X number of permits and construction and the testing of that against the code. Can you summarize that for us?
Yeah, sure. So in my memo that I sent to the board, since July of 2024, we had 22 new house permits. This is not going into commercial permits or other, like additions, large additions and anything, but just doing new houses. What, what the big change that, what the state is proposing is called, basically, was called a res check and a com check, which is a program that the federal government provides, that you basically input all your numbers, your square footages of your walls, your floors, your ceilings, and then all your elements, your windows, your doors, and then mechanical stuff gets added in as well. And you can currently, right now, you can either do the res check or the com check and provide that information to the town for compliance, or you can do a prescriptive method, which is basically your, you know, your normal house plans and say, I'm gonna do R20 cavity in the wall with an R5 insulation on the outside and an R60 in your ceiling or, and similar things like that. What the new code's gonna, what the stretch energy code's gonna say is, all projects, no matter what they are, moving forward, you are not gonna be able to do prescriptive, so you'll have to provide a res check or a com check. And in my calculations that I did from July 1, in my reporting that I did from July 1, I found of the 22 permits that we did, 10 of those provided a res check. And of all those 10, only one would have actually passed for the new stretch energy code moving forward. And then I provided also three res checks for just a small ranch for the new 2021 to try to meet the 15% better, which of only one of those, which actually 16, 16.1%, which is better than the code, which would confide with the new stretch code, which required an R23 in the walls, the exterior walls, 7.5R on the exterior for continuous insulation in the entire basement insulated. Currently, right now, the most practice on your move in houses per se, not the, you know, the higher end houses that are on the, on the water that are, you know, building to a different set, they're usually insulating the basement ceiling, your first floor, and not insulating the basement, which I don't think is the greatest practice, but it does to the code. So if we went, if we continue to go with the stretch energy code, it would make some changes for the builders, but that is up to the council's side of this policy.
Can I ask a follow up on that, Nick? So, just because I got confused, of the 20 recent permits for residential housing, 10 of them submitted a res check to comply. Does that imply the other 10 did the prescriptive check and said, we have this type of insulation and therefore that, that's our, our method? And then I have a follow up to that.
Yeah, that is correct. They did not, they did not provide a res check for those new houses, so we reviewed the permit applications for compliance with the prescriptive method.
Got it. And the options that we have in front?
Inspection that had to be done off of that.
Okay. And the options we have in front of us are, if we adopt the 2021 code as amended by the state or with the extra 15% requirement. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And you said that some of the 10 wouldn't have passed?
The 2021.
Sorry, go ahead.
I said, there is some amendments that the state made to the 2021 that are not exactly what we are on today. They don't really change a lot, but there is a couple amendments, but not, not many.
So of the 20 recent residential permits, you said there were some number that wouldn't have passed the extra 15%, but that ultimately, they all passed the 2021 code, which came into effect in Freeport after July 1?
Correct, yeah. On my memo, the 10 of them, one of them was right at zero, so it passed. It was .3, .3, .7, .9, 1.3, 4.7, 9.3, 9.8, and then there was the 20.5, which is probably an $8 million house on the water.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Thanks, Nick.
Any other thoughts?
I just, what, what is the overwhelming impression that I'm left with is, although we are trying to encourage people to be as energy efficient as possible, and the state code continues to trend in that direction, if we're trying to make Freeport a place that you can actually build a house or build multiple houses, it seems that this would be, if we were to follow this new increased stretch code, it would put us at a significant disadvantage in terms of housing costs in Freeport compared to other communities.
I have a question for Nick. We, we had quite a lot of deliberation last year on whether to adopt the stretch code, and we had some input from a number of constituents in the community about why that was important. And I guess maybe this is my own shortcoming here, but I thought that would be with us for a little while. Nick, if we go through this gyration again today, are we gonna look at another iteration of yet another stretch code and another request 12 months from now?
No. So the state law, basically, we can't be two code cycles behind. So the last time that the, the regular energy code was adopted, I think it was 2018, but since then, the main legislature changed and said, you can amend the energy code, but it's the only one you can amend. That was two or three years ago.
Right.
So I don't, unless the legislature makes a change, you wouldn't have another change for another six years.
Six years? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Am I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, am I thinking of this right if I say that last year, we adopted the stretch code? The state and everybody else is sort of catching up to those stretch codes, and now we have an option to adopt double stretch codes that go even further, that we can decide to include or not. Does that sound more or less right? I'm paraphrasing, trying to oversimplify, but.
I get nervous when I try to oversimplify, Nick.
Last change was, is just saying, the board, the main state board has to adopt the stretch code, and whatever code that is, it's up to the municipality to decide if they want to adopt that or not. It just coincides with the same time that they adopted the new codes, you know, with the building code, getting upgraded, the mechanical ventilation. It just, it's a year apart, kind of, but that, that change was probably two or three years ago that the legislature changed. But there could be another legislative change at some point, but I'm just, I'm just proposing to give this to you now, saying, this is what we have to do, what we're preempted to do. We're gonna have to follow it April 7 anyways, but if the board wants to decide to continue to go with the stretch energy code, we can, or the council can decide to go back to what the rest of the state is on.
So, Nick, I think, just to get at what Dan was trying to say, is it, is it correct to say that the stretch code that we adopted is now essentially the standard of the state code? Is there any difference between what we adopted as the stretch code now?
There is a difference. There's just a couple amendments that the state took out, which is a little different, but it's not, it's basically the same.
And then if we were to continue to adopt the stretch code, we'd be pushing ourselves to further, sort of, requirements? That's correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
This is very logical, makes perfect sense.
The item tonight is just to set the public hearing for the 15.
Yes, so I, you know, the first, the first part is administrative, kind of like cleaning up where, where it lives and some of the, making sure it's consistent. So that feels logical and easy. So if we want to move forward with this one, and then we'll discuss the more challenging one after. Councilor Brown, could you read the be it ordered for item 39-25?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 15, 2025, in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM. Consider, consider amendments to Chapter 2 Administrative Code, Section 509.3, to omit specific code references and cross-reference back to Chapter 11 Building Code.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right, so that one is set. So I think the next one is sort of where we need to kind of give Sophie and Nick a little bit of guidance of what the public hearing might be about. If we do want to continue to sort of push forward and adopt the stretch code, would it be adopting the stretch code or continuing?
Nick, do you want to walk them through this?
So the, yes, absolutely. Let me just go to that. So on the, in your agenda tonight, I, Chapter 11, I highlighted the two sections that would have to be changed, where you would want to propose. A, B, C, and D is just updating from the 2015 to the 2021, we can't change that. But if E, what I highlighted was the act, the added sentence that we amended last year. If you want to continue with the energy, the stretch energy code, we keep that in. If you didn't want to continue, we would delete that out. F would change just the 2016 to 2019 for the ventilation. But at the end of F, we omitted, we shouldn't have put 90.1 into, because we adopted the stretch code, which is the IECC, which references back to 90.1, but you have to go to the IECC if you adopt the stretch energy code, so you don't give them the option to do 90.1, which is another commercial energy code compared to the IECC. So if you want to continue with the stretch energy code, we strike out 90.1. If we want to just go back to the state 2021 energy code without the stretch code, we would keep the 90.1 in. If that makes sense.
So the, to make this a little bit less confusing for council, all that Nick and I need to know at this point is, do you want to simply have the state building code, or do you want to have the state building code with the optional stretch code? We'll do the rest of it for you. Once we know what you want.
But either way, we still need to set the public hearing because all of the dates still need to change regardless of what we.
Yep.
Is, is there any way to know, I keep coming back to the data that showed, you know, X number of homes were built, these are the ones that would have qualified, these are the ones that wouldn't. Is there a way to quantify what that cost to be in compliance would be if we move to the new stretch code? Is that an easy number to get to? Or just to give some, some scale in terms of what we're talking about? Because subsequently, we're talking about new development within the town on a significant scale, so I think it's, it's a piece of information that I'd want to have a better understanding of.
I can, I can try to figure, on like a simple, like the ranch that I did, I can try to figure the cost of just the material, labor's a difference, because you're not just installing just more insulation, you, you gotta look at the entire, you know, building itself. You're looking at trim, you're looking at siding, you're looking at everything else when you start adding different types of continuous insulation and things like that. But I mean, I can figure out the cost of materials to get you to that 15% better for a simple ranch house or something like that. But I'm not gonna be able to give you the labor and then the other additional costs of things that would happen.
That would be helpful, Nick, so I appreciate that, if we get just at least a capture of the material cost.
Yeah, that would be great. Thanks for the extra work on that. And I do appreciate you knowing all about this because it is clear as mud up here.
Welcome, we can get to it, Chris.
So I'm kind of trying to take questions from the council chair and need to look at the clerk, because the question was, did we need specific or could we bring it all to a meeting? And my understanding of the charter is that we have to show the proposed strikeouts and additions to an ordinance, we have to post it 10 days before a public hearing. So we really would be looking to go in one direction or the other, or, I mean.
We have to get off the fence here and decide which we're gonna go.
Yeah.
Would there be any option to set two public hearings with two versions?
Can I?
Go ahead.
Make an alternative suggestion? I mean, I, I think that the whole point of having a public hearing is to get the public input, so I don't think whatever we decide is really what we're committing to vote on after the public hearing. I think that we need to pick a direction just to get the language there, but then once the public hearing is there, we can, we can amend it then. So if we say we're gonna propose to strike out that stretch language, we could amend it after the public hearing and we hear that public input and put it back in, or we could do the opposite. We could say, this is the proposal, and then after the, getting that additional data and hearing from the public, we can say, okay, we're gonna take that part out.
That sounds great to me. So which way do we, so which way do we want to put it in for the public hearing?
Throw my hat in the ring. I agree more with what Council Smith was saying about encouraging housing to be built, reducing barriers. I'm curious about the extra data and what it'll show. It may change my mind at the next meeting, but right now I would vote in favor of the new code without the extra 15%, whatever language matches that.
Yeah.
Looking for general thoughts on agreement or disagreement.
I agree with that.
Okay. I can see Council Egan really.
Yeah, I don't. I, I agree that we should put it in there and see what the cost is and then see what the, what the public input is. I have a feeling we're going to end up with not using the stretch code in whatever we amend and adopt for 2021, but I think we got to keep reaching. So, but it seems like I'm one of, one of one among the seven.
Well, maybe you're right. Maybe by putting it in, it will attract the attention we need to smoke out what we really need to do. So, you know, where we land is what really matters.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think we also need to be mindful of the fact that this is a continuous journey. We've made improvement. We're better off today than we were when we started debating this, what, like 18 months ago? It doesn't preclude us from having this on the agenda when it feels like we're ready to take the next step. I, I think that, I mean, I agree with you sincerely, John, that this is the direction we should go, but I want to be mindful of the cost and the impact, especially in today's economic realities and the direction that the town's trying to go on a larger scale. But we do have to be good stewards of the environment. We have to make better long-term decisions. So, you know, I think we're still moving in the right direction, but we'll just see how the discussion goes.
It would be curious if we had some project data as well from something other than single-family homes, but at least we can talk to Nick, but I believe we have, you know, zero multifamily construction going on. So there's an indicator right there. So if we're, yeah, it's, it's very difficult. And it's also worth noting that the only one of the 22 permits that Nick reviewed that met the new stretch code was a multimillion-dollar single-family home, where there's probably a whole lot of intentionality to do just that. So it's, yeah, it is, it's an uphill, uphill battle, for sure.
To that point, John, Nick, I know we have had other multifamily homes or multifamily housing units proposed and approved, just not built. I'm wondering if we have any plans available for something like that, that you would be able to do that similar analysis for, of what the current, with, with the current plans for insulation, what that would be, and then what it would be. And I know, I know you're back to the whole materials cost, not labor, which is, which is also significant.
Yeah, the one I could think of that's coming up that just got approved, I can see what the difference would be. Yes. Because I know one, last big multifamily was on the 2015. We haven't had a multifamily since we adopted the stretch code. But I'll see if I can get that information on that one and see what it would, what would happen. I'll see if I can do that for the next meeting.
All right. I, any other questions for Nick? All right. I very much appreciate this council's dedication to sorting out this complex issue and also asking for data. I support us making data-driven decisions. And I, for the sake of just getting the, the public hearing set, I propose that we read it kind of as-is, which says to consider repeal of the stretch code.
I thought the way, I thought the way it's written includes the stretch code. Was that?
Building code to update code.
The way I highlighted it in the text, it includes the stretch code to continue.
But the be it ordered mentions, consider repeal of the stretch code.
Oh, yeah, I guess you're right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I see what you mean.
If you do that, all I would just change on it. So.
But they'll fix the, the text if we read it this way. Okay.
Are we comfortable with that? Moving forward without it's written, to be ordered? Okay. Councilor Smith?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 15th, 2020 in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM. To consider amendments, Chapter 11 Building Code, to update code references and consider repeal of the stretch energy code.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And I think, just to be explicitly clear, we'll come back to this with the public hearing with more information and data to make sure we're making a very informed decision.
I voted against that.
Oh, so sorry. Thank you. It's so unusual. I sometimes don't notice. Thank you. Did you get that, Chris? Okay. Andy, do you want to say a word?
Yeah, on the subject, can we, if you're going to have a public hearing, it'd be, if you want people to come and speak intelligently about it, we really need some, be able to pick up some information so that we can decide what's the difference between a stretch code. Of course, we had a multifamily designed and passed and approved right next door, so maybe they could use that one. It was overturned at appeal, but it was approved at the planning board. I don't know if he had gone through the process with Nick or not, but there's one that they can examine. Obviously, the plans were in.
Yep.
I, I know we all try to make a greener, better house, but at some point, if you want to bring housing to Freeport, multifamily or single-family.
Yep.
You know, anybody can afford a million-dollar house on the waterfront. Two million dollars, probably going to hire an architect and an engineer, and they're going to be able to do it. But the home builder, it's very confusing without being able to walk through this thing. So it'd be nice if we could get information upfront so we could speak intelligently.
Agreed. Thank you. All right. Moving forward to.
Time that we can just step off and just say two words?
Quickly, yes, for sure.
I just want to underscore again, and this was part of our conversation last year, but all the affordable housing that comes in through here is not subject to the same building code that's determined by Maine Housing Authority. So I just wanted to clarify about that in terms of multifamily. And then, I mean, since I'm here, I'll just say, I really encourage Freeport to move forward with this. I just asked Nick if he would do the model of that ranch without a basement at all, built on slab, and see what the difference is. And when we're talking about the new building code, it's not just adding on to a traditional building. There's new systems, there's new materials and new ways to build that sort of even out the cost. And it's an education issue, not necessarily a cost issue. So I really support John. And I'm, my name is Naomi Beal. I live in South Freeport, and I'm the Executive Director of Passau's Maine. We're moving into downtown Freeport. We'll have a lot of information available to the public. I took heart, actually, in those, of those 20 examples that Nick had, 10 of them used the rez check. Maybe that 20.5 was an outlier, but at least two of those projects came whisker-close to passing at the 10%. And keeping in mind that it's that incentive for electrifying, which is also important when we're talking about the code. So that 15 being brought down to 10% required improvement for all-electric residential. Anyway, I'm super happy to talk to any of you guys. I'll certainly be writing to you, but you can feel free to use us as a resource.
It'd be splendid, Naomi, if you had some real-world explanations of, of the materials and what it costs, just to help back up the decisioning, because we can get lost pretty easily.
I hear it.
And goes back to this code and to that code and the ASHRAE 64.25.
Yep.
That is completely foreign language to somebody sitting in the audience who's trying to figure out.
Yeah, I really, really wish that the state, I asked Ross Anthony for this actually just today, if they had done any kind of analysis for both cost and effect in terms of energy savings between the base IECC 2021 code and the new stretch code. And there, it doesn't exist, actually. I asked Neep to do it as well, so I might be able to pull that together, but it's not easily accessible currently.
Thank you, Naomi. Okay. We'll move on to item 41-25. This is to consider action relative to acceptance of State of Maine grant funds. Caroline, I see you on Zoom.
Hi, so can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So this is actually a grant we applied for back in March of 2024. This was supposed to be awarded quickly by the state and with a quick turnaround, and that turned out not to be the case. So we're here with you, thanks to assistance from Melanie Sacks, who followed up for us at state level. We have been awarded a $50,000 grant from the Housing Opportunity Program. The intent of the grant was for a municipal project to enhance housing opportunities of all types. Since Freeport had been working on a lot of ordinance work, we wanted to piggyback on that and kind of go along with it. So we applied for $50,000. It originally included $5,000 of funds to update our site plan review processes. This would benefit multifamily housing projects, subdivisions, and all other types of projects. So we had initially proposed a dollar match here. $25,000 of the funding would go to overhauling the subdivision ordinance to streamline the process, modernize performance standards. And then $20,000 would be a multimedia project to get outward to our residents of how they can create housing in Freeport. And this multimedia project would include all types of housing from ADUs, which is accessory dwelling unit, one-family, two-family, and multifamily projects. Because the announced, awarding of the grant took so long, other towns, just like Freeport, had planned on using ARPA money for the match. We have worked with the state and we are able to use a combination of money and staff donation. So at this point, we, we anticipate that of the $12,000 that we originally proposed with an ARPA match, it will most likely be mostly with a staff kind and kind donation of staff time. And we, the state's being pretty flexible, so if we have a little bit of money left after we get our pricing, we can go back to them and amend the contract. But we have till the end of 2026 to spend all the funds. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Caroline, we have a workshop coming up next week with the Housing Committee that has some specific recommendations, including some adjustments to ordinance language. Is the scope of the grant, scope of work proposed in the grant proposal and agreed upon now rigid? And can it be amended? If we come up with some great ideas from that workshop next week and we'd like to include it in for review, this would be an excellent way to get it done efficiently if we've got some grant money to pay for it. Is that possible?
So the, the award is specifically for updates to Section 602 of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance for the two ordinance components. So if there are items that relate to those processes or standards within those processes, I think we could, if it's, you know, overhauling height, for example, in another zoning district, that would be outside the scope of this work. One of the things that we did ask them about is if we had funding left, if we could go back, because when we finish the comprehensive plan process, if we change our growth areas, we'll have to do some additional cleanup work to still comply with LD 2003. I know that's something we could, but we didn't talk about other zoning projects related, because these really were primarily process-based.
Okay, so 602 and the, and the site plan, is that what you said?
602 is the site plan and then the subdivision ordinance, so if there's performance standards in there.
Great. Thank you.
And Kyle and Brett have been heavily involved in this as well and will continue to be.
Great. Any other questions for Caroline? Okay. I will go ahead and read the be ordered. Be it ordered that the town manager be authorized to accept and expend up to $50,000 in Housing Opportunity Program municipal grant funds issued through the State of Maine Department of Economic and Community Development to update and improve town development review processes and create a multimedia public education campaign to enhance knowledge of Freeport's development process.
Second.
Any other questions or thoughts? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm particularly interested in the multimedia public education campaign. I didn't hear much about that, and that is of interest. Great. Okay. So moving on now to public comment period two, or part two. This is for virtual attendees for items not on the agenda, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. All right. With no public comment, we move on to other business. And our only item for other business tonight is a presentation of the downtown parking analysis prepared by Walker Consultants, presented by Brett Richardson.
Hey, everybody. Brett Richardson, I'm the Development Director for the town. We've talked a lot about downtown housing. It's been a consensus among the community that we need downtown housing. And a strategy to do that is to convert surface parking to housing. Adequate parking for our businesses downtown is key, too, right? So we're in the process of, as we try to invite housing, making sure that we're striking that right balance. And that's a, a policy decision and an economic land use decision, too. So if we go too far in supporting conversion, we could make Freeport a less convenient place to visit. If we don't go far enough in supporting conversion, then we're asking property owners to maintain expensive infrastructure and maybe preventing the highest and best use for our land that could increase our tax base. So this is an important question. Happy to have Greg Strangeways tonight from Walker Consultants with a PAX Portland area Conservator, or Comprehensive Transportation System Grant that provided this research for us. And it's important to note, too, that this project and the study came right out of the downtown vision. So what you're seeing tonight is sort of a culmination of some, a recommendation from the downtown vision. The Climate Action Plan that was recently approved supports downtown housing. The Dogbone Report that we've talked about recently supports the type of infrastructure, trails, pedestrian connectivity, safe biking routes that can help reduce traffic demand, which we'll hear about from Greg. So it's, it's an exciting time, and I think Sophie mentioned the Maine DOT Planning Partnership Initiative, which will hopefully kick off here pretty soon. And that's going to be looking at this downtown area, too, in terms of how to make sure that we're supporting all kinds of transportation, including cars, but other modes as well. So this is a good time. It's a relevant data point, and turn it over to Greg so he can share what he learned by looking at our parking in Freeport.
Thanks, Brett, and thank you all for taking some time with this project here. So yeah, Greg Strangeway is from the Boston office of Walker Consultants. This is a parking study, but as Brett said, it's really driven by the need for housing, that there's a lot of, you know, national momentum recognizing the housing shortage. And then, you know, very specifically even recognizing that building off-street parking and, and maybe specifically having to build mandated off-street parking is expensive. Cars take up a lot of space. So it's, you know, money and land in many cases that, that could be used for more housing units or, or for other uses. And certainly here, it sounds like even from just listening tonight, you have this housing workshop next week, you have this Planning Partnership Initiative project, which my company did not bid on for, you know, various reasons, but we certainly wish you the best of luck with it. You know, so it's great that you're, you're really thinking about enabling more housing to be built here. So that's what, what we really were looking at and were tasked to do. The study area is this, you know, mostly your VC1 district. It is the same as that downtown vision study. As Brett said, this really came out of that as, as a need to drill down and look, look at parking specifically. And then really, the question was, you have, you know, fairly uniquely, this shared parking system. For a long time, you've, you know, allowed people to build less parking if they put their parking into the shared system, so that's great. And with that, you have a lot of surface parking. And is there enough to allow some new housing to be built, which could take away some of the parking supply and also add some parking demand? But could you allow some of that housing to be built without any additional parking and still have enough parking? As Brett said, you're trying to balance that. You want adequate parking, but you don't want to have overbuilt parking. So that was really the question here, if housing could be built with no new parking, you know, how much housing? So, next slide. So we did really focus on the shared system. There is some other downtown parking. The map is from the Downtown Vision Plan 2022. But the ones that were formerly part of the shared system, so there was 2,310 of those off-street, and then we also did a little bit of our additional analysis on the on-street and counted only those that were at least three hours or more. and counted only those that were at least three hours or more. So relatively unrestricted, you know, not one-hour parking. So out of those, 2,355, we didn't do full counts ourselves, but the town had already done a lot of counts over the last few years. And in addition to specific counts, they had used drones and had, had some aerial photography. So all in all, we were pretty comfortable using all that data. And, and the, you know, best practice really is to design for a typical busy day. You want enough parking. You don't want to fall short regularly on busy days. But you also don't want to build for the church for Easter Sunday, as some people say, right? You don't want to build for your absolute busiest day of the year. You're just going to have a lot of parking that goes unused most of the time. And again, takes up a lot of room and costs a lot. So generally, we're kind of looking at the 85th percentile. There wasn't enough data to say exactly what that was here, but we did, from the counts, use that as our guide, basically. And even on busy days, again, only 39% of these shared system were occupied. By the way, you can stop me anytime. I think all this will only be about 10 minutes, but you can interrupt me anytime with a question. Yep, go ahead.
I just read in the report, and it reminded me, I read it earlier, that you found that only two days actually exceeded the 85th percentile?
Yeah, of the ones we had count. So the busiest day that has been counted in the last few years was Black Friday, one of the years, day after Thanksgiving. And 72% of the spaces were used that day. But again, it was really an outlier. And again, from all the data we had, that that's, you know, you're going to have some days, whether you have special events, you have festivals. So, you know, we, we want to acknowledge that, that there is going to be some days we think, you know, I sometimes have brought up the example of Hampton Beach for the seafood festival in September. And they just, you know, they handle the parking for the summer season onsite, but for that they can't, so they run shuttles. So for those, you know, extraordinary days, it may be good to use special measures and not, you know, design the parking system for those busiest days. But yes, it seemed to be relatively uncommon. But still, there are a few days per year where, under our proposal here, you wouldn't have enough parking. Okay. And so then we looked at what, what would happen. And we're really focused again on housing, although we know that some housing could come in a mixed-use development. So our, our main tool for this is the Urban Land Institute's Shared Parking Model. So even though it says shared parking, the ratios for each type of land use are synced up with the ITE International, International Transportation Engineers Manual. So for each single use, it is focused then on, you know, sharing uses when there's peaks at different times. And maybe more relevant here is that some people are, are going to be able to get to a site without driving and parking. You know, we know Freeport is pretty auto-oriented. There's not a lot of options here, but we're going to talk a little more about that because we do think you can influence that to some degree by having people, you know, have other options to either park once and then be able to get around other ways, or even maybe not bring your car at all. You do have some bus service here. You have Amtrak, obviously. You have bike, bike paths. Anyway, we, we needed to make some assumptions about this. So we tried to work with, as, as we've talked about already, a lot of work has been going on here about this. So what we basically assumed, just usually an acre of surface parking could hold about 125 parking spaces. But some of this new housing might be on lots. The Dogbone Report, the Transportation Oriented Development Initiative came out with a report and identified kind of 11 acres that could be developed. We didn't get into which specific parcels would be developed. But using that, we just estimated that of the new housing that might be developed, 75% of it would go on sites that are currently part of the shared parking system. Not all of it, because there is some other private parking or, or not shared parking, anyway. So that's what we used for that assumption, that each acre developed for housing would take away 94 spaces from the supply. We had to come up, the, the, one good thing about the shared parking model is that it does relate parking demand to the size of residential units. You know, sometimes municipal zoning doesn't do that and just, but practitioners, you know, always see that bigger units have more people, therefore more vehicles, more parking demand. So we did want to come up with an assumption about the unit mix in these new apartments that would be built. And we also didn't get into, you know, affordable housing or senior housing. So those would typically have lower demand. So again, we figured this is pretty conservative to use market-weighted apartments and use this mix. It sounds like you might even, in the end, have a slightly weighted more, more towards smaller units, more studio apartments. But we figured this was a conservative way to look at it. And then some other assumptions, so that Dogbone Report, as we refer to it, you know, we, we use that really for our guideline. You're not obviously going to have high rises here, but what type of housing would be developed? And it, it looked to be in that range of 52 to 60 units per acre. So our scenarios kind of show that range for the housing development. We work with many municipalities that are, because of the demand, you know, thinking about starting to charge for parking in their densest areas, maybe leaving free parking more to the fringes. But, you know, we didn't, we didn't, yeah. Yeah, we did not see a need for that here. It didn't seem like where you were headed. There is, again, you know, a good amount of surface parking. So we're assuming it remains unpaid. And then again, you know, we did, we'll again touch on this a little bit more, but all of these, not every one of these tools on the screen is, you know, relevant here. Since you're not charging for parking, there's not really a parking cash-out option. But, you know, a lot of these things could reduce the parking demand. We tried not to kind of go crazy with this. We know it's not Boston. But that still, you can, you can influence demand to some degree here. So we wanted to bring that in. And, and again, we did, we're designing here for this typical busy day that would occur a couple of times a month, but not for the, the really rare days, a few days a year, where you might need to take kind of extraordinary measures to meet the demand, like, like shuttling people from parking that's maybe outside the downtown here. Okay, one other factor we wanted to bring in. So the retail typically generates much less parking demand than restaurants. So you can see the difference there, you know? Restaurants are roughly four times the vehicles per square foot. And similarly for entertainment or other uses. And, you know, Freeport is pretty heavily weighted towards retail uses at this point. So we, again, just to be conservative, you know, put in this, we increased all the occupancy we saw by 10%, just to account for that, that in the future, some of these parcels might change from retail to something that's more intensive for parking demand. All right, and then this is what, what we came out with. So this is, the high demand is, you know, basically parking demand patterns continue as they are today. There's not really any interventions to change that. The new development, again, takes away some of the supply and adds some demand. But even with that, you know, again, assuming this, this 39% occupied is your busy day that you're kind of designing around. In that new residential units, we do actually have a, a higher rate of vehicle ownership than we see today from the data. And that is, you know, tends to be what happens with new construction. That's, you know, tends, tends to be a little more affluent population, more likely to, to want to own a vehicle or vehicles. And some of this disruption from COVID we have seen where people even more, you know, they're, they want to have a car nearby even if they don't use it that often. So that's that high-demand scenario. The mid-demand has some intervention in on the transportation demand side, TDM. So we tried for this mid-demand to use some of the easier, cheaper initiatives. You may know Maine already has the Go Maine program to help people match rides for car pools. So again, for some employees to the area, that, you know, could be incentivized, or at least there could be tools to help find rides. Preferred parking for carpoolers, there's ways to encourage that, to enforce that even. And that could be an incentive, again, for people to share a ride if they're working at the same place or near each other and at the same times. Microtransit shuttle service, you know, that's on-demand. So you call for a ride, but it, it's more like an Uber, Lyft model and responds, you know, within 30 minutes, let's say, typically. That is a little more expensive, you know, to operate than just, you know, allowing people to match their own rides. But it is getting popular as, as an alternative to fixed route transit. And, you know, many municipalities are, are adopting that for, you know, could be for seasonally, could be for peak times only, could be more throughout the day. And then the lowest-demand scenario, so you can see with each one, we, we show the people who are already parking in the system get a little bit less. And then the new development, residential development, they own slightly fewer cars. So again, we tried to be somewhat conservative with this. But if there really are interventions to help people, again, maybe bring a car and park once, but then be able to get around walking, biking, shuttles, or perhaps even come on the train or bus and not bring your car at all. So anyway, with all that, you can kind of see the range there, but I think the next slide kind of sums up our central finding. You know, which, again, on most days of the year, you would still have enough parking while allowing, you know, between 400 and 510 units to be built with no additional parking. They would use the shared system. And that's, you know, just in the VC1 district, which matches the study area pretty closely. But there's a, some of the study area is slightly outside the VC1 district. And then I think there's one more slide about, you know, things you could do with this. So one is, you know, again, I think, you know, even if you don't necessarily want to go whole hog and eliminate, you know, parking minimums and allow new residential development to just use the existing parking, you know, there is a lot of momentum to relax these or reduce these parking minimums. You've already, again, done some of that. You've encouraged the use of the shared system. But there may be, again, you know, if we, if we agree that there is, you know, available shared parking that could at least meet some of the new demand, that may be a way to do it. Or alternatively, you know, developers want, you know, that kind of certainty and developments might be proposed here that wouldn't otherwise, if you really change the, the parking minimums. But alternatively, you could sort of let it be known that you will, you know, listen to these proposals to build less parking or build no parking for new housing. So again, I know you're talking a lot about housing and, and we hope all this kind of informs that. And then, you know, we also just, as we kind of went through all this, we weren't focused on other land uses, but we did notice your parking minimums are, in, in this district, are the same for retail and restaurant. And as we talked about, restaurants generates a lot more. There's nothing wrong with what you have by the numbers, you know, three parking spaces per thousand square feet of retail. We just showed that it often is around four. But again, if we agree there's some available parking already that can meet some of the demand, you maybe could reduce the retail minimum and keep the restaurant minimum and, and again, encourage development that way, maybe as part of mixed use with housing or maybe separately. So again, you know, just, just an idea as we kind of work through some of these. So I think that's it. Happy to take any more questions.
Any cut or discernment about, I mean, I think there's a considerable effort to increase the amount of restaurants in the community because that helps with the vibrant downtown, or at least we're hoping maybe they follow the housing that we're hoping to get in. But is there any distinction in your data if the restaurant is providing parking on its own property? As opposed to having to rely on the shared system or the, the general, you know, open public spaces?
Yeah, so I realized when we threw this in at the end, but we didn't actually really look at any other land uses besides housing. The focus for the study really was how much housing could be built. But yes, I mean, when we typically do a study for a mixed-use development or any development, you know, we are just looking at what's the expected demand and then what is the supply. And so certainly, some of that supply could be shared and some of it not. Many municipalities do that where, you know, a new development builds some of their own parking, but also maybe as an agreement to use some shared parking.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have data questions. The, the counts that you use were the ones that the town has been doing over the last several years. Do you know the years of those counts? Are they in the last five years or longer ago?
They were 2021, 22, 23 mostly, just because we were starting this in 2024. So some of those weren't done. We, I think, got a few more from that. And then the drone photography was 2024, I think, so.
All different seasons, different days of the week?
Yeah, it was focused on busy seasons, so summer and the holiday shopping.
Okay. And then the, there was a lot of focus on the 85th percentile, where we have 39% of spaces occupied? Is that right?
Right.
So 85th percentile means one day, six, six out of the seven days a week, more or less, 85%.
Yep.
If we're looking at the peak, peak, top three days of the year, that's like 1%, 99th percentile.
Yep.
So is there another number between six days a week and, you know, not planning for the three days a year?
Yep. And I should actually mention, sometimes I worry about getting too into the weeds with this. This is a great question. The actual standard in the model is 85th percentile for most land uses, including residential. But it's the 20th busiest shopping hour of the year for shopping because we do recognize that in retail, you know, so much of the business is in these, in the intensive holiday season. So, and again, the, the model is really, you know, it first came out in 1983. It gets updated, you know, the last one was 2020. So it is pre-COVID data, but we also do our own research, try to adjust for any, you know, post-COVID things. But anyway, it, so for retail, it does actually reflect that, that it's, you know, much closer to what you're talking about than the 98th, 99th percentile.
So could you say more about that? As you said, it's the 20th busiest shopping hour. That's the target for, you're trying?
Right, right. Now, again, you know, the data we have was focused on busy days to begin with. And then we tried to pick, you know, there, there was very few outliers that seemed like it's, you know, really not what you want to design for. But I can't say that we had enough data to do the full statistical analysis. But we do think it fits with the intent of, you know, what the shared parking model is all about. You know, their, their motto for it is just enough, no regrets. So that, everybody wants enough parking, but you don't really want to just overbuild for something that's rarely used, so. But it is a great question there.
Yeah, thanks. Question, I don't know if this one's for you or for Brett, but there's always projects we hear about that are in the works. Like we have some projects, housing projects proposed here or there. As those get built, which I know is still a long time away, do we have the model that we can rerun these numbers and say, okay, the new totals are now 1,500 spots? And now we run the numbers against?
Yeah, all of these assumptions. So that's what we did, is not only provide, there is a report, which it sounds like you've seen. And then we also provided a tool where you can adjust any of these assumptions so that going forward, because, yeah, we, we realize that's, that's really the, maybe the more valuable part, is that, you know, we laid out something here and there's instructions in it. And, you know, we're always available to help if, if there's a question. But yes, so you can kind of change any of these assumptions. If you want to shoot for something above 39%, that's easily doable in the spreadsheet tool we provided.
Great, okay. So we can do, we might have to do more counting, but if we get two projects built and then we say, okay, where are we now? Do some counting and saying, okay, we still have room, or we still have room. And then at some point, we're like, okay, now we got to rethink. Great, all right.
The good news is, is we have one parking lot that's been blocked off for a while on B43. And then we have a large tent and one part of the downtown. In some ways, there's almost a baby step in that test direction right now on the ground.
Yeah, but the point.
Those are both counted in the, in the data here, right?
Right.
And that is the idea. As you get more information, you could kind of refine this approach.
I think it's remarkable that the, with a, in my opinion, relatively conservative consumption ratio that the data shows without adding a single parking spot, we can add 500 units of housing in the VC1. If you were to bring forward in a two- or three-year period, 500 units of housing, holy mackerel, I mean, you know, and, well, anyway, it's just striking that we have that much capacity.
I just wanted, from a parking perspective. Be very clear that, that number of housing we could add also takes into account the parking we would lose.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, this land use for more restaurants, less retail.
The parking you'd lose and the parking that would be consumed by the residents in those units. And we still have adequate spaces, a surplus of just the shared. That's not the private lots. That's remarkable.
Yeah, we, we didn't know there was a lot of surface parking here, but, you know, we didn't know what the result would be. But you're right, it's a, a significant amount of housing. You know, we think, again, using this model could be developed without new parking.
Yeah, that's right.
I have a question just on the, the minimum for retail versus restaurant. And I, I understand, I think, in concept, why retail would require less parking in terms of amount of time particular people are spending in, in a retail store versus a restaurant. Is there something else in that calculation that you could identify? Because my concern, and I'm thinking why Freeport has the same minimum for retail and restaurant, is that we're taking into account that somebody's going to park in that space once and hopefully visit multiple stores. So the amount of time that that space is going to be So the amount of time that that space is going to be occupied is on par with the amount of time that person might spend in a restaurant because they're visiting multiple stores during the time that they're there.
Yeah, so I would say that is part of the captive markets. We call it people who either work or live and are already parked, or yes, they're parking once and visiting multiple establishments. That is part of the shared parking model, but the base ratio I'm talking about there, that isn't really a factor. Those are like same in ITE, which isn't looking at any of that. You would have retail with a much lower parking demand ratio for retail versus restaurants. And so the, the one thing to remember is that we're talking about the peak demand times. So again, it is 85th percentile, but just, you know, stores, you're only just going to have so many people at one time in there for, and it is the amount of time also that you're staying. Whereas, you know, for, for dinnertime or lunchtime in a restaurant, you can fit a lot of people and they're going to, you know, be there for the duration of the meal.
So it's much more about the density of the square footage?
Yes.
Number of people in that square footage?
Yes. It's both though. People do stay a little longer in restaurants compared to stores. So it's the time spent and the number of people per square foot. Thank you.
This is great.
One, one more question. It might be irrelevant, but I'm just curious about it. So there's a chart in here, the time of day adjustment factor, and it accounts like overnight residence, residential parking peaks overnight because people are at home and that's where their cars are during the day dips a little bit, but not, you know, all the way down to zero, dips to 60 something percent.
Yep.
It shows that visitors in peak between 7:00 PM and 10:00 PM, which I would love to see in Freeport, but I don't think that's true in Freeport. The chart shows that, you know, the 7:00 AM through 4:00 PM is all the same, which is a 20% of peak. I don't know if that made it into the methodology or if that's just, this is the industry.
That's visitors to residences is what we're talking about there. So, you know, the residential parking, again, that's all we were really focused on. So we only kind of go into detail about housing. But, so it's the residents themselves and then their visitors. And yes, the, the visitors.
Visitors to somebody.
Residents park on Friday night, Saturday night.
Not shoppers or dining.
Right, right.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
I know we have a few folks who want to speak.
It's great you're reading it.
But before we get to other folks, I just want to make sure council, councilors are all set. All right, Brett, you just have to be here for 20 more years to keep adjusting all of these models to make sure we stay on track and don't overshoot. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was interesting. Thank you. Andrew Ossnall. I have a question towards shared parking. And I remember when I used to come to meetings years ago and people gave shared parking, it was usually that they had parking to put in the pool. And that became shared parking because they had a storefront. They were reduced their mandates for square footage for parking because they went to shared parking. Now, if you build a housing development and it has no parking, how do you use somebody else's shared parking when you put none in the pool? I mean, I've never heard anybody say how they're going to accommodate this is. I've asked for years, how many lots are assigned to how many storefronts downtown? I never really got an answer. We have lots of parking studies, but we never seem to get to whose, you know, which storefront, which parking spaces are theirs. And now that we've changed the parking ratios, do they have extra? And can they rent them through the town to a development? But to show up and say, I'm going to build completely on the lot and I'm going to use somebody else's shared parking when I put none in myself? I think that would have to be a change of some kind of ordinance language or permissions from the people that own those parking lots. So, I mean, I, we hear a lot about using other people's shared parking, but it's really not the town's shared parking. It belongs to the business owners uptown that, that own those lots or control those lots because that's what was mandated for them to have storefront on Main Street and had to be 600 feet from the front door. So I'm curious if that ever got calculated into how we're going to build 500 units downtown on, you know, without any parking, we're going to use somebody else's. So I think that should be part of this mix. And I'm not against downtown housing, you know that. But I'm also concerned about landowners that have purchased, you know, lots and made their investment into those lots so they can have a storefront downtown.
Yeah.
And they're taxed on that.
Important consideration for sure. I mean, Brett, do you have any thoughts to that or?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a great question. I think, you know, there's an example of a housing project that was approved over here on Depot Street a couple of years ago that was 67 units. And I might get the numbers off by a little bit, but I believe that they were able to cite about, they used, they used shared parking for a portion of it and they used dedicated parking for another portion. And so they were able to fit 67 units on an acre with about 35 or so parking spaces on site. And then they went offsite into the pool and secured those parking spaces to meet the need. So I think what we're talking about is potentially creating more flexibility for property owners. If you reduce the minimums, they have the option to keep that land and parking if they think that's the highest and best use for the land. But if they don't and the town doesn't dictate that, then they would have more flexibility to use that land to what they believe to be the best and highest use. And that could be either leasing it or selling it or to somebody else who could use it for a different use. I think we talked about parking recently. The pool has a surplus and there has been very little demand for that surplus over the last several years. And that the, the cost of parking from a rental space, if you were to come in and bring a business and had to find a space, that rental rate for parking has continued to sort of go down. So I think it's a valid point. It's, it's kind of the point of this study is to make sure that we're understanding, you know, where that risk is if we go too far. But I think that there's adequate pool. In talking with the planning staff currently, there is in the ballpark of 500 spaces on the earth today that are not meeting a requirement. But they belong to someone. They do. And, and I think, yeah, that's, that's, but it's theirs and if they would like to put it to some other use, they, they could. I don't think the town is suggesting, or the point of this discussion, at least as I understand it, is not to suggest that we would go to a property owner and dictate that they convert their housing, their parking to housing, or even that they must lease their parking to a housing developer to meet that housing developer's need. It's simply pointing out the fact that if you look at the data, there appears to be a surplus. And then if the town were to look at policies, the policies would create more flexibility. And that's all. And it's up to the property owner to do what they wish with their property owner, with their property. That's how I think about it.
That doesn't answer my question.
I guess one question though is, is I think to your point, Andy, is what are multifamily housing? What is the parking requirement that that development would still have to provide even though they are building on an existing parking lot?
Well, they're talking about no, they're talking about no parking requirements and using shared lots. But my question is, if we have extra in the pool, that still belongs to somebody and we can't just come here and say, you can build a house and then you can just go park in somebody else's lot, is my, is my point. And I think you need to decide how you're going to handle that. Now, if other people have excess space and they want to make a deal with this guy, I think that's fine. And that's what's always gone on. It's been, it's been, you know, shuffled through the town hall to make sure that everybody has a space or whatever it is. And the town extracts a little piece of that action. And, but I think we need to decide, you still need, people are going to have one car, maybe two. And, you know, unless you put your parking space in the pool, you can't really say, I'm, I'm a shared parking guy. Because the, the system always was Steve's got a storefront, you know, he's got so many parking spaces. He says, I don't quite meet it, so I'll put mine in shared parking. And then he meets the requirement. And then of course Steve has put parking in the pool. So that other people can use that shared parking. But if you're having a house and there's no parking for it, how can you go and say, I'm putting my park, I'm, I'm using shared parking?
So, but to your point, all of that has always been based on what the parking requirement for each type of business and the, and the square footage.
Yes, but it also meant that you, the tenant, you know, the landowner, put parking in a pool. You had a parking lot to put in the pool and say, my parking is now shared. If you do this housing development without any parking, how do you access the shared parking?
Or you had to lease it.
That's right. Or you had to lease it. And that's what I'm getting to. If we get 500 extra spaces, maybe they can, maybe the housing thing should lease those, not just walk onto somebody else's shared parking.
Well, and, and that's to my point. That's why I think what we are looking at and what the planning board is going to have to look at is what is the minimum parking requirement for any multifamily housing? Because it's one thing to say, you know, let other people figure it out.
Yeah, that's not a good answer.
Which, which works if all of your parking is based on the market.
That's right.
If, if that's the case, but if you're requiring everyone else to provide parking in terms of commercial use, but you're not requiring housing to provide parking, then to your point, you're just putting that parking requirement on to somebody else.
Yeah. Without compensation.
Take your point.
Yeah.
So I, so I think Andy makes your right point. I think we do need an assessment of parking capacity, who owns it, what the restrictions are. Because the unintended consequence of this is that we'll get further down the road with development and all of a sudden we'll find ourselves having made the, a smaller number of parking spots that are worth more and someone could come in and cut deals. And then all of a sudden we don't have free parking downtown, we have paid parking. And that's an unintended consequence of what we're trying to do. So I think it's just a piece of the puzzle. We need to definitely understand the landscape and make sure we're not making short sighted decisions that are going to put us in a position where all of a sudden we go from having a surplus of parking, it's great, no one has to worry about it, to it being a scarce commodity that's now monetized and we are SOL.
Yes, I agree. And before, I see you want to speak, but we have Mary Davis FDIC on as well.
I really liked this dialogue. I, I appreciate it.
She should be. All right, go ahead, Mary.
Thank you so much. Can you meet? This is Mary Davis, President of Freeport Economic Development Corp. And I just want to start out with saying thank you to the town, to the council, to Brett and to this organization for bringing this data to us. I think it, once we have this data in front of us, now we have the ability to make decisions based upon real information. And I'm, I'm so pleased to have that. So thank you, thank you, thank you, all of you. I think the second, second thing that I would say is as Brett notated, our developers, our housing developers to date are planning parking on their developments because they know that there's some amount of parking that they'd like to have close to their apartment builds. So I think the idea of having no parking, we have not seen that as of yet, but there also has been a desire to use other parking, like parking garage, to be able to lease lots. So I think we, as you all have said, have some, some further look at to do there, but I think our developers would work with us. And then the final thing that I wanted to say is, again, thank you town and thank you Visit Freeport. We have trialed the idea of having trolley buses move people around in Freeport and it has been successful. I think it was done at the Oyster Festival and the Freeport Law Festival. And we have a little bit of experience in to do that. So I like the idea of on our busiest days, moving people around in a more efficient way. So again, thank you so much. This is exciting to see us moving forward and having information that helps us to make better decisions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Go ahead.
Jay Yulmas. I'm a property owner of commercial and residential in town. Greg, want to thank you for your report and Brett for helping push it along. I did have a couple of questions as part of my, my overall questions for Greg. Are you able to get the microphone? So, because I don't think you're, you're supposed to have the microphone if, if you speak.
I think.
Where you can walk up.
Yeah.
Where you can walk up. Yeah, join me. Yeah, please. Yeah, I don't want this to be an inquisition, but I also want to thank the, the council for being open to, to, to a dialogue. This is really, really an important issue. And I do, as everybody knows, support housing. I just get very concerned about, like Matt pointed out, and I think Dan's question's kind of alluded and a few other peoples were alluding to the unintended consequences that could happen if we don't consider what could happen if, if we build too much. As I understand, 50, here, come closer. I don't play, yeah, 50 units or each acre gets about 50 units. Is that, is that what it is?
Yeah, so, and again, we took that cue from the Dogbone Report, as we call it. They were looking already, this Transit Oriented Development Initiative was looking already at what type of development might be realistic here. So they had sort of a range in there of 52 to 60 units per acre.
Based on the height restrictions and things like that?
Yep.
Yeah. And, and so 50 units, you know, I would think, I don't know, five buildings could fit in, in the back parking lots, I'm just guessing. And that would take up a lot of parking if, if there was, if there was no requirements. And I just want you to, that would be an example of an unintended consequence. The other concern I had is thorough, and I haven't read through it all, but I'd look forward to, as thorough as this was, this was data that you received from, from other people, it wasn't data from, that you, your, your group gathered.
Yeah, with, with very minor exceptions. We did a little bit more with the on-street parking because there wasn't as much data there, but mostly we're using counts that had already been performed.
Okay. And I, I had only, and I want to just bring this to the council's attention, that I had asked certain people in the past when the, when the counts were done. And I actually said, well, was the count done on Friday, Saturday, Sunday? And the reply was, you know, you know, our consultant or it wasn't, it wasn't your company, but our person doesn't work on the weekends. And I thought, oh, you know, that's a pretty important, you know, piece of data that we have to gather. This is, this is a really, really, you know, there may have been, there, there may have been other times when they did count the weekends, but these are the critical times that have to be counted. And I think you'd agree as someone that's analyzing data, you've got to have, you know, the, the best possible sets. And so I just want to suggest that to the council. One other point that was brought to me by someone that works at Hanaford, and I'd have to reconfirm this because it was a few years ago, but I've brought this up before. And I don't know if you've ever done anything for like a market basket, but the, the Hanaford requires when they go into a, a place, six spaces per thousand, not three. And they only count on those being full six times a year. Have you ever heard of any statistics like that for, for a, like a supermarket? Which, which, if that's true, would indicate that these peak times were really, really critical to, to the retailers.
So a couple of things there. Grocery stores are definitely a different land use in all of the models than regular retail. And it is generally a bit higher than retail overall for demand. That being said, you know, a lot of times what we see for parking demand and aiming for even the 20th busiest, busiest hour of the year, you know, a particular tenant may want actually more parking than that, that their interests are, you know, often to say, we want to absolutely make sure we never run out of parking. You know, so there can be a natural tension there between what a supermarket owner wants if they, if they control the land or if they don't versus, you know, what we see for parking demand. But grocery stores are different than retail.
And forgive me, I wasn't trying to draw the, the, the comparison from grocery stores to retail, but more the, that they demand, they, they need a particular, a number of parking spaces for these peak times, which are, are more critical, I think, and from my observation compared to when I was a kid, that the shopping malls seem to be packed all the time. But I think those, those peaks are, and you may have data to show, to agree or not agree with this, are fewer and further between. So those peak times, and I operated business in town and I, I see those peak times being really strong, but they're, they're, they're less than they were in the past. How, how does the data show from, from, you know, what you've experienced?
Yeah, I mean, so there, I think overall, just generally, there's, you know, a balance to it where again, there's typically that you don't want to design the parking for the absolute busiest moment or hour or day of the year. It's just going to, again, mostly go unused, it takes up a lot of space and costs a lot. So there's some, you know, balance to it. So what, you know, the shared parking model over the years, working with a lot of people, it's also sponsored by the International Council of Shopping Centers, that model, and the National Parking Association. But again, to achieve that balance, you know, for most land uses, 85th percentile, because you can, you know, more readily maybe afford a few days where you don't have enough parking and people find some other way. For retail and for grocery stores, things like that, again, it's the 20th busiest hour of the year. So recognizing that you do want to get closer to the absolute peak, but still not design the parking for, you know, the very busiest moment of the year.
Okay.
So I just want to take a second and make sure that council, are we, do we have any other questions or thoughts?
I do have one sort of request and it's either Sophie, Brett, or anybody up here, I guess. I'm sure Alabine is aware that we're doing this.
They own half the spaces in town. I'm sure they have thoughts about which lots they can sell for housing, how much parking they want to have available for their stores, whether they want it to be free, whether they want it to be paid. So I don't want to take direction from them certainly, but I am curious about their opinion about where all this lands in the end and if they have a vision. I'd love for that to be a, a piece of the puzzle that we hear about. So if we haven't had that dialogue, it'd be good to have it and report back on, on where they are or invite them to, to talk if they want to come.
So I think we did share this report with them and we have a meeting with them in June, so I'll ask what they, what they think.
Is there going to be like a, like a workshop on this? Because, you know, it would be nice for, for some people to be able to talk in a workshop.
Well, I definitely encourage you two to keep speaking. I think if, if there's any other changes to potential next steps, ordinances or otherwise or policy, that would go through the appropriate processes where we'd have public hearings. So.
I appreciate that. I, I actually, I feel like I have a lot of knowledge and I'd like to try to offer some, some answers to any questions that you might have. I don't know if I, I think I also heard a few points that, from councilors and, and from Greg about this idea. I don't know if there's a, an understanding of shared parking versus private lots. I, I don't know that there are too many private lots in town. I believe most of it's shared. Do, do you recollect that?
Yeah. So there was more, I think, another 700 spaces or so in the downtown district that weren't part formally, at least, of the shared parking system. So again, to kind of be conservative, we just focused on spaces that were formerly part of Freeport's shared parking system. But there is, I think about 700. It's in the report, something around another 700 spaces that are not part of the system.
Yeah. Good thinking.
Which is about a third of the, the bunch that you're talking about.
Yeah, a quarter, maybe.
25% of the total, right?
Yep.
Shared parking means you can just show up in, in anybody's lot and park there. Is that how you, you would describe it in, in the pool?
Yeah. I mean, especially since it's all unpaid here. But yes, that is the intent, I believe, of the shared parking system. Anybody can use it.
I think, you know, this gives us great data. I, oh. That wasn't us. Great data, great, like sort of a way to organize it and present a lot of data in a, in a helpful way. I think what is coming up, as I'm hearing from you and Andy before you left, is yeah, there's, there's puzzle pieces we need to make sure we're keeping track of here as we use this information to make decisions moving forward.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I want to bring to light. I want more housing. I absolutely do. And I could also say, if, if I could, if, if someone had a crystal ball and would say, pack the parking lots or most of the parking lots with, with housing, and these people would not be here from, you know, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, like guaranteed or weren't allowed to park there or on the weekends, it would be a natural fit. But, you know, they're going to be parking there, especially on the weekends and the, and the holidays potentially, you know, rightfully because they live there and they want to park there. So it could also create a backlog. So I'd just be very, ask you to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I was just saying, we did have the drone photography from weekends in December just last year. So that was part of all of this and it is still, you know, 39% again is what we would recommend designing for, or assuming is currently occupied. But again, you can adjust that as you move forward. And we did have weekend data from the drone.
And also speaking with the manager, we've discussed that there has been some weekend counting as well through various sources.
And I hope there is. I, I know there was one anecdote where, where I asked about this and someone said, there, you know, we, we were off on the weekends. I'm going, oh my God.
Yeah.
So you got to get the really good data because these peak days, and I, I hit this home, they're fewer and further between and they're, they're critical.
Yeah. Well, Jay, if I know you, I know you're going to keep making sure we're good on this and keep us accountable and thinking about these things. So thank you.
I, I want to get to the end of, of a, of a good product. That makes the, the visitor that's coming to Freeport not be frustrated that they can't find a space, they'll just go back to Boston.
Yeah.
You know, or go to Kittery, which is oftentimes hard to find a place. So that's one of our special like nuggets here.
Agreed.
I appreciate you putting this up. Thank you very much. I hope you appreciate my questions.
Yes. Thank you very much. And thank you. All right, folks.
I'm going to hang on 10 more minutes.
That's the end of our agenda.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
I second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Aye, all right. Thank you.